Hello, everyone. I call the Select Board Meeting to Order this evening, September 14th. I'm sorry.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, sorry. September 19th at 7:08 PM. Motion to call the meeting to order. Thank you so much. Why does this? Thank you. Motion to call the meeting to order.
Second.
Can I get a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call. Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
Mr. Carrara.
Yes.
And Mr. Kevie is absent this evening, but I am here. I ask that all to stand, if you are able, so we can salute our flag. Okay, here we go. In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extended the governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30 AN 20 until March 31, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. This meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible. After the meeting, if live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful, times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. So before I ask for a motion to adjourn, to go into executive session, I wanted to mention to everyone that item number, let me make sure I have this correct, item number nine, which is appointment of the Veteran's Services Officer, will be rescheduled and we'll address it in two weeks. So I would like a motion to adjourn, to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session for the purpose of?
For the purpose of discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining with the Stoughton Professional Administrative Employees Association pursuant to GL Chapter 30 and 21A 3 and subject to the chair's discretion.
That's my motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hello, everyone. So thank you for attending. We will be exiting to our executive session. It may take about 30 minutes, at which time we will adjourn from our executive session and reconvene to open meeting session.
We need to call the board.
Okay. And Mr. Gito on that motion. Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
And Mr. Carrara?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So we'll be...
Do you want to hand it to Colton?
Oh, yes. Mr. Colter.
Madam Chair, the information I'll be presenting to the members of all the contracts is the least complicated, so I just wanted to say for the benefit of the citizens in attendance, it may very well be shorter than 30 minutes, so if they chose to hang around, if they don't want to miss anything, they may want to stay close to the building.
Okay, great. Thank you very, very much. Hello, everyone. We're calling the Select Board Meeting back to order tonight, Tuesday, September 19th, and it's 8:00 PM. On the roll call vote to call the meeting back to order in open session, Mr. Gito.
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Next on the agenda is Select Board Comments. Are there any Select Board comments?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. You were first.
It's been a few years since a town meeting spent almost an evening complaining about the poor conditions of roads. Remember that meeting? It was long. So I just want to recap what's happened in the last couple of years. Last year, the DPW had 22 roads repaved. And this year, it's repaved 27. I mention this because the town heard what people at town meeting said, and they focused their attention on doing something about it. And I think that we should just recognize that we're not all deaf. In fact, we might in fact be doing something.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky, did you have a comment for this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to report back to the board of a very pleasant experience I had today, as you're all aware. Town manager some time ago asked me to lead the efforts to work with folks to get our train station refurbished. We've done a lot of talking. We've done some meetings. We had a great meeting a couple of weeks back with Congressman Lynch and our State House delegation, a very aggressive list of things that we'd like to do in town and asking for their help. And one is the renovation of the train station, and we talked about potential grant avenues, potential uses, and so forth. So that all being said, I know my friend over at the Historical Society, Dwight McCarron, the president, was contacted by Kevin Welton from SMAC, and so was I. And I went over today with Kevin, actually went yesterday at SMAC, and we had probably a two-hour meeting about what we can do, how we can work together, people that have different interests and so forth, and getting the town to be showcased, the way that we've been lacking for years. And so many things that can be done. And just the ideas, just the engagement with Kevin is, for me, it was a joy. I've been labeled by some as having a target on SMAC, which was never true, and then, you know, the things we went through, but I spoke up where I believed we could be better, thinking and knowing that certain people there, we could be better. We have the opportunity. So I feel that I have to just throw this accolade out to Anya, Kevin, and everybody at SMAC, is the video presentation that we worked on today is going to be something that is just going to showcase that building, what it is now, what it can be, and how somebody that goes out and gets grants for us or takes this and runs with it, you know, they're going to be able to see this. Kevin went in, as I did, for the first time in my life, and being a history nut, never made it into the clock tower, and was up there today for the first time. It needs definitely to be rehabbed, but I think there's some options that take that $40,000 to $50,000 figure that I had heard, sometimes better than $100,000, and brings it down to very manageable amounts. And the questions he asked, that was what really bowled me over, is that questions that Kevin did the research on to make that something that is really going to be a home run for the town. I just have to send out accolades, and everybody knows if I've got something to say and it's not good, I'm going to say it here. But when it needs to be said for the work that was done, and I know Kevin can hear me back there, I should bring him out here and let everybody meet him.
Yeah, leave him out here.
As a matter of fact, Kevin, come on out here for a minute. Kevin, come out here. Here he is. Here he is. Right? Did you zoom in? So crouch down here so your camera gets you in here, and just wave to people. So, but hey, listen, honestly, you heard me say it, and I said this to you face to face, but man, that was just an experience, experience, and looking forward to doing whatever we can to get more things like that going that showcase the town. And I love your ideas. I mean, not all these are things that I came up with. He came up with most of it. All I did was say, well, I can help you in this area and that area. So, man, thank you so much. Thank you. All right.
No, until the documentary actually comes out.
Well, it's okay, though. Just the way you were doing your work, I have all the faith in the world, you know? So, all righty, take care. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you so much.
Kudos goes to Kevin and to SMAC team. Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Mr. Carrara, did you have any comments?
Madam Chairman, I just have a quick update on the auction that we're putting together on surplus in trucks that are not needed, trucks that can't make it anymore because they've made it to the end of their line. The town manager and I and the superintendent of Public Works, Paul Jafum, we're going to meet together once more and lock it down, and then we'll be advertising it to go out. And I put a list together for all the members so that they can see what's going to be potentially out there, and I think it's going to be something good for the town that the stuff moves forward, goes into somebody's hands who can use them, and then we're going to look at a different procedures on not running trucks to the point where this isn't a good thing to do, that maybe turning them in a little faster and stuff that needs to be auctioned faster will get auctioned faster so it doesn't eat up a lot of space, because when it goes, there'll be a lot of space for them, gentlemen. Put stuff where it belongs. So that's where we're at with that.
That's great. Mr. Colter, did you have a comment on that?
On that, yes, I do, Madam Chair. I want to thank Scott. It was a long Saturday that he gave of his time. I'm paid to do this. Scott's a volunteer, and I'm grateful for the time he gave. His expertise came through on every piece of equipment. Stoughton has had a long history of saving equipment and letting it die out in the snow and in the heat and in the rain many years after its useful life. We're trying to get ahead of that so that we're not letting equipment depreciate on our watch, and we're not insuring them, and we're not paying registration fees every year. And I just want to thank Scott. It was a great meeting where I said very little in that eight-hour period. Scott's expertise came flying through, and I thank you for that, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Madam Chair, a few other announcements?
I have one more.
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's okay. This is very important. I just want to recognize several on your staff that retired, and I don't know if our community is aware that this has happened. The first is William Field, they called him, Sweeney. He retired on August 1, 2023 from the town after 34 years of working at the DPW. He worked in the sewer department as a water equipment operator specialist. Congratulations on that retirement. The next, and these are notices that I received, so there might be other retirements, but I just don't know about them. Mary Martin. So Mary Martin's career at Stoughton Town Hall. Her career at the town hall spans five decades. She was hired in December of 1988. Mary worked here for over 34 years, retiring in year 2023. Mary started work in the town clerk's office in 1988 as a receptionist and soon took on responsibilities as the principal clerk. In 1993, she moved to the building department to become the office administrator. Soon that job grew to include the zoning board of appeals as secretary. For the next 30 years, the building and zoning department became her home. Mary's smile and welcoming ways was the first thing the public encountered when they came to the counter. She would patiently work to help both homeowners and contractors navigate the process of obtaining various permits as well as guiding them through the zoning process. Her knowledge will be sorely missed, but her smile and infectious personality will be missed more. Congratulations on your retirement, Mary. You earned it. Next is Janice Bruce. Words about Janice. Nurses are the heart of health care, and they don't make them any kinder or more generous than Janice Bruce. She treats everyone she meets with compassion and understanding and is truly a friend to all who needs one. She was very dedicated to our VNA for over 34 years and will be missed dearly. To quote Maya Angelou, "As a nurse, we have the opportunity to heal the mind, soul, heart, and body of our patients. They may forget your name, but they never forget how you made them feel." We wish her the best on a well-deserved retirement. And the reason I quoted Maya Angelou because she has had a plaque in her office with that. So thank you very much, and that's all I have. Moving right... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Carrara.
Bill Rowe.
Okay, we recognize Bill Rowe with a proclamation. I think it was at last week. Okay. So move right along, Mr. Colter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of announcements as a follow-up to the dog herring we had several weeks ago. Just to inform you that Ms. Geller hired Michaela Collins, owner of OM Obedience, to do the behavioral analysis this board ordered. That analysis was done on September 12, several days ago, and we're awaiting the report. I'll submit it to you as soon as I receive it. Second announcement, some good news, and with many thanks to Pam McCarthy. The town has been issued, has been awarded two Community Compact Grants. The first one is for $30,000 for the costs associated with developing, documenting, and implementing a financial policies and procedures manual. The second grant the town has been awarded by the Community Compact Grant is for $50,000, a grant award for the town of Stoughton for the costs associated with the completion of an American with Disabilities Act self-evaluation and transition plan. So that $80,000 in grants will help us fund two of the major priorities that through your leadership we set as objectives for the year, to become ADA compliant, pardon me, and to develop an operations manual for finance and administration. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to...
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, Mr. Gito.
I have a couple of questions. Bill, Tom, I'm sorry, I probably should have talked to you before I made a couple of statements here, but I'm wondering, when is the financial summit that was supposed to be held on September 30? When is that going to occur? We still need to have that kind of a...
Yeah, that was Mr. Rowe's effort, Lou. I have no idea what he had planned or what he hadn't had planned.
Who?
Mr. Rowe's project. With his departure, we've canceled the summit. We'll put it together in the future, but I had no idea what he was trying to accomplish through that, so I can't duplicate it. There are things we do need to talk about as a Select Board, school committee, superintendent, town manager, and the like, but he had not developed an agenda for that other than to set the date. So it's not something we can move forward with after he left, because he hadn't planned anything, that he passed on in his departure or in his exit.
Let me just mention, Madam Chair, I think we need to have such a meeting, whatever form it takes. We had a presentation of a capital plan back in June or earlier than that, but we need to get that nailed down before we start the budget process for the year or as part of the budget process for the year. So whatever it takes to do that, we need to get on to it. So I don't mean to try to deal with it tonight, but we do need to get on it.
Mr. Gito, if I may, to answer that question, to address that point, that's well underway. We are merging the capital plan into one between the schools and the town. We're meeting with the superintendent tomorrow. The superintendent and his staff are developing their plan. Mr. Tisdale is meeting with our department heads as we begin the budget process. That was not going to be an agenda item in the summit, so that is well underway to have the capital plan be, to add the next year to the capital plan. It's a three-year plan. We're going to add on another third year. It's a rolling plan, as you know, but it's going to be merged, school and town, in one plan, as you had requested. So that's well underway. My point is, I don't know what was in Mr. Rowe's mind for a summit, so we couldn't just pick the ball up when he left suddenly.
Yeah, I hear you. So I went from there to what we need to have.
Right.
And we need to have that before we really get too deeply into budget decisions, and that needs to be laid out front and center.
Sure.
Because it's a very important part of the activity. The other thing, you mentioned in the last, at our last meeting, that you had removed all electrical items from the telephone poles, and National Grid was going to start their effort to deal with removing double poles, and you were going to mention something else that's going on in that regard. I know that Scott and I, and I think everybody else on the board is sort of interested in knowing about that.
Sure.
I'm not asking that you leap in right now and deal with it, but it might be a good thing to have on your agenda for the next time.
Sure. As you may remember, I gave an update on where we are with Verizon, the other one's doing the removal at the last meeting. Deputy May Comer is the project manager on the project. You'll note that poles have been removed, where there have been double poles, several of the second poles have been removed. There's a database that we work with National Grid. There are 48 poles right now that have been stripped and ready to be removed. I can have the deputy come next meeting and update on specifically what streets are lined up. Now, we don't know when they'll be removed. What we do know is we have to report on their database when we've done our part of removing the low voltage and the fire boxes. All of the low voltage in all of the fire boxes the town is responsible for removing are now removed, and Verizon is aware because we're using their database. And after 30 days, if they're not removed, we can then start charging them a penalty per day for every day it takes for them to remove it. So Jack Maycomer, the deputy, is on it to the specific telephone pole, the specific address. The town has met all of its responsibilities required in order for Verizon to remove those poles. So the clock is running on them removing it. But if the board would like the detail on which poles are in, which ones are not, happy to do that, we've got it right down to the number of the telephone pole.
Frankly, I would like to see that. I don't think that we need to have a meeting with anyone on it, if you just send out that list, because some of those poles are in kind of dangerous places.
Agreed.
You can't see around some of those double poles very well.
We'll have the deputy send that report out this week.
Thank you.
My pleasure. He's done a great job on that.
Let's move right along to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? And I think it's one online. What? Yes. Yes. Ms. Joanna, and I got your last name, but please... Ms. Joanna, I forgot your last name. I apologize for that. Please state your name and your address. Push the button green. Yes, thank you so much.
My name is Joanna Rosenblatt, and the issue that I'm bringing up was addressed, but it wasn't resolved. That's why I'm here to try to accomplish that. I wanted to reconcile the comments that I sent in an email to the town manager and selectmen regarding the egregious profanity and harassment I received just for attending a climate change committee meeting, and selectmen Kevie and Tom Colter were kind enough to meet with me, but upon further reflection, I feel we only address the surface of the problem and something more needed to be done because these actions are just not okay. To me, people like that, who could act like that or say these things, should not be on any committee, and that's what prompted me to send the second email. I merely felt that an apology was the least they could do. Yet I haven't heard anything as of today. The chair and the vice chair did nothing to address the issue at the time or afterwards that I know of, and no apologies have been forthcoming. So I'm led to believe that they approve of this behavior. One important underlying fact that I need to address is that I continuously brought to the attention that first I was being thwarted from even knowing about the climate committee's schedule, and then, secondly, when Eschudo O, who's a member of the committee and a very kind-hearted woman and unbiased, she handed me a memo that was being passed out, and the chair felt that rather than tell me that these papers aren't for me, could I please just hand it back, which I would have done, instead, Molly ripped them out of my hand, which is really a physical assault. And again, I brought this attention to the attention, and it was never completely addressed. So now here we are today because it's escalated into five profanity-laden rants toward me at the meeting, that happened actually before the meeting. And I do appreciate selectmen Kevie and Tom Colter's efforts, but in retrospect, I'm a town resident who should not have had to have that, endure that type of treatment and by people that were appointed by the selectmen, and that's why I'm speaking out. I never asked for the removal, for the removal of all three of the people, Michael, Molly, or Laura. I just merely asked for an apology, and apparently they don't feel their behavior warrants an apology because I've heard nothing so far. I'm also requesting the written documentation pertaining to the measures taken or whatever happened for that abhorrent behavior, and I don't know how that works, so if you could tell me how that would transpire, I would appreciate that because I just don't know. And I understand that this committee chooses not to have public comment, but when I spoke prior to the onset of the meeting, I was told to shut up and sit at the back of the room. I was disparaged and defamed to the other members by Molly and not allowed to speak before or even after the meeting, and that's just a flagrant impingement of my constitutional right to free speech, which they have no right to do to me. The whole experience has caused me to see that this is not, to see not only is this behavior a small microcosm of what's happening on a national level, but it shows that hatred has just infiltrated these meetings and for no reason, just other than the fact that I want to give different viewpoints, and I've been reviled and treated abhorrently and hated really for that. I'm not desirous of causing any trouble, but trouble has been given to me, and I just want to bring it up here to resolve it so exponentially that won't grow deeper. Selectmen Kevie was also kind enough to explain to me that the committee was designed and voted upon during the town meeting to seek climate change measures, not to hash out empirical versus non-empirical evidence, as I was trying to do. He then explained to me that I would need to develop another committee for that specific purpose, and he offered to meet with me to help me achieve this goal. That hasn't happened, and I just wanted to follow up to find out how to do that.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Kevie? Vice Chair Cavey is not here this evening. You've expressed a lot, so I'm just trying to remember all the points. As I recall, and I know this as a fact, you met with Vice Chair Cavey and our town manager, Mr. Coulter, for about an hour and a half. I believe you and your father, you and your dad. And you discussed the situation in detail. You discussed the purpose and intent of that committee. And they discuss with you the availability to help you to maybe form your own committee. So that's outside of the realm of being a town manager or the vice chair. That was something that they wanted to be helpful to do. So I'll leave that to the three of you to work that out, and maybe you can take the lead in doing that on your own. And it starts with getting signatures, if you care to do so. The other is how we reacted to situations that are outside our code of conduct. That is the select board's code of conduct. We think it's not right. It's harmful to our community at large. But I can say, in all honesty, the action that we take behind the scenes is not something that we want to publicize that we did. But we did talk and express from all points of perspective, and we always listen. We always listen to situations, but sometimes it's beyond the control of the select board. We did have appointing authority, but what occurred to you, you know, we can look at it from a lot of different perspectives. One perspective that wasn't raised, and because I come from a family of military and I come from a family of law enforcement, I have to be very careful what I say because I know just enough to make me dangerous. And sometimes, if the chair asked you or doesn't recognize you to speak, then it could be interpreted, you know, in the broader, in the broader scope of things as being a public nuisance, right? So, you know, how far do we go? What do we say? We were trying to do things to make it so we live in a community that we appreciate one another, and we listen to what each other says, but we also have to abide by open-meeting laws. And one of the things that is, you get organized, and you have a chair, and the chair recognizes you. So it was a lot of elements that happened, and it was unfortunate that things were, happened like that to you. And I really feel, deep in my heart, sorry that it did because things like that have happened to you, have happened to me as well. And that's something, one of the reasons why I really wanted to have a code of conduct that is passed on to all of the staff, that's passed on to all of the committees that are in the town, but we only have so much authority to encourage people to be respectful. And sometimes, people say things, and it offends someone else, and I'm not saying to the degree that it offended you, but I'm just saying to the ground of saying things that you say, ouch, you know, ouch, did I warrant that? Right? So I ask you honestly and sincerely to work with the town manager and Coulter, and maybe take the lead on your own if you would like to start a committee that's focused on what you would like to do, which is get your signatures, and it has to be presented to us, and then it has to be approved at town meeting. And with that, I would like to know if there is anything else anyone wants to say, or can we move on to the next citizen's comment?
Can I say something further, or are you waiting for them to say something?
I am really trying to move forward to the next citizen's comment.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I understand your argument. I wasn't going to say anything, but this is something that needs a little bit more talk. It should be handled, you know, with a meeting, with the players, or what we're going to do, because this is really not the intention of citizens' comments, to be here and then say, "I'm looking for solutions now," and we make it a whole-meeting issue. And I agree with the chair that we need to move forward because we have other business to do tonight. But again, you have a right to be here. We're one town. We're one town. If people don't act accordingly, we need to fix that. I have all the faith in the world that the people that are in this building every day doing their job have the ability to do that, whoever that be. We're not going to have a department head that doesn't deal with it, but it could be something that a member of the board, working with the town manager, or the chair, her designee, that we get it resolved. I like the idea that the chair mentioned on if you want to put a committee together that, you know, is the other side of that issue. It's a logical thing. It's a logical thing. This committee was put together for one purpose. If there's another side of a story, well, just like they came forward, one Stoughton resident came forward, got the signatures to go to town meeting, got it voted, I can't see why town meeting wouldn't do that. Because it allows, and that's what, you know, America's great for, is we debate, you know? And everybody has their voice heard. I'm concerned that we're breaking down here, and we're getting this so it's becoming personal. And I don't want to see that happen. I think we need, there's got to be something done that people know etiquette of meetings. Believe me, I've sat here many nights, and want to jump over the table at some people, but you can't do that. It's not what we're here to do. But we try to do things so that we can engage and that everybody has their voice heard. We may not agree, we may argue like crazy. We're good at that in Stoughton. But that everybody has that right to do that. And bring facts up to town meeting so that when an issue's voted at town meeting, you get both sides of it.
Yes.
So, and I would be more than willing to speak with anybody and add my two cents into it and see what we can come up with for a plan, and then if somebody follows up with you.
Okay, so should I leave it that someone will follow up with me? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'll tell you.
Excuse me, Mr. McCrisky, there. We have Mr. Coulter and Mr. Carrera. Mr. Carrera, before we...
I'm going to speak from an angle I didn't think I'd ever speak from. Inclusion. That's all you hear. I don't understand why, every committee we have in this town, there's a nay side, there's a different view side. Some people don't want to see building affect the Concom. They're against anything that a shovel goes in the ground. That's their view. I don't understand why somebody told a resident that she has to start another committee because her view is different from the inside of many people. But the word is inclusion. If we tell her, I don't know, maybe somebody's going to tell me, if we tell Joanna to start another committee, when's it start that we're going to now get a new Concom? Maybe we've got to start a new planning board, because I know a lot of people aren't happy with stuff that's going on there. So I think we've got to fix, like Joe said, this might be another layer. But I think starting another committee is just going to bog down maybe what the initial committee is supposed to be for. But I think anybody has the right to have a view the other way. If it doesn't get voted on or go their way, then they had their time in the sun. But I'll tell you right now, I am not for starting more committees because another committee has a different view. And I am not saying people were mis-treated because I wasn't there, but I'm going to stop it now. Use the word inclusion that everybody's hammering on us, and that's where I stand now, because I've accepted it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Gito, just one minute, and Ms. Jutress on the line, and Mrs. Walsh, just one second.
The committee was formed by the town meeting for the express purpose of presenting to the town things that the town could do in order to mitigate global warming. The committee wasn't formed to debate whether there was or was not global warming. So if there is a group that wants to propose to town meeting that they want to form a committee, a town meeting committee, to show that there's not global warming, that would be fine. But I am not going to endorse a committee to say that there's not global warming, because I don't believe that's true. And I don't believe that most of the people now believe that to be true, that there is no global warming, and no man-made global warming. So I'm not for a big debate on this. And I'm not interested in having the committee that was formed to provide to the town things that it could do to mitigate global warming, to get bogged down in a discussion of whether or not there is or is not global warming. I would suggest that the people who believe that something should happen with global warming to mitigate it will have to come back to the town with their proposals. The town will then have to decide whether or not they want to spend the money or take the action in one way or another to implement those things. And that may occur at town meeting. And at town meeting, people can speak for and against those proposals. But there's serious business to do, whether some people believe it's serious or not, whether or not they believe that it should happen or not. That committee should be allowed to do its job. And if some other committee wishes to form, then they can go through a process that isn't going to get my vote to do that. But they can do it, and if they get the votes, then they can go ahead and form the committee. If it's going to be a town committee, then they have to have town meeting approval or selectman approval to do that. And I'm not in favor of that. But that's my, that's my take on this.
Can I?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky, wait just a minute.
And this will be it for me.
And then it will be Mr. Coulter.
I just feel that, and I agree with Scott, and then I don't agree with Scott, but again, this is the greatest debate that we talk about, is citizen participation and the rights of citizen participation. A committee was formed for a specific purpose. That was the petitioner's goal. Town meeting supported the petitioner, I believe overwhelmingly, supported the petitioner's goal to begin this process. If somebody feels that the process isn't needed, the same process should be used. And I don't like putting committee after committee after committee, but that was the process used here. If there was a committee that would like to be formed to rebut those issues, that's where it has to go, is to the people. Town meeting are our legislators. We can't control this. You've got to go, if you believe so strongly that this doesn't exist, then you've got to go to the people that voted that committee's existence and see if they're open to a committee that would be disputing that information. Congress does this all the time, committees. People get up on both sides of the aisle, and they argue the issue. This person says it's 1, 2, 3, they're saying it's 4, 5, 6, and 8. That's the beauty of citizen participation, that everybody has a role. So Scott, I'm not looking to start a committee, you know, just to start a mess, but I believe the speaker before us tonight has a valid point. And it's not up to us. This is, to me, the greatest form of government when it works with citizen participation. I have a real question of the future of town meeting, you know? But again, this is the process we're using. This is the process that was used to create this committee. I would, I will sit with anyone, Mr. Town Manager, anyone that we have to do, because when these people do sit on these committees, it's a town meeting committee, but they represent the town of Stoughton. If there's profanity, and there's rudeness, and there's people that are not being treated fairly, I'm ready to make a move on something like that. But I would start by bringing it to people's attention. And I'm going to cut myself, I think you know my position on this. I believe everybody has a voice. And use the same process that they used and see if town meeting supports you. If not, you go, you have a right to be at those meetings, you can voice your opinion. But what that committee does is the reason they were formed, so. And I did say to Mr. Gito, I says, "I think I'm going to be very quiet tonight." Sorry, Lou.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Now, Mr. Coulter.
Madam Chair, I'll be very brief. I want to echo what Mr. Gito said with respect to the process. I think he said it very eloquently, so I'm not going to speak to that point. I'd like to speak to what was done in response to the behavior of that committee, because I want that committee to know that under the leadership of Mr. Cavey, we met with Ronna at length and listened to what happened in that meeting, two separate meetings, two separate meetings with the committee. In response to that, I can tell you with certainty, Mr. Cavey spoke to the chair of that committee at great length, I'm going to go so far as to say hours, about the role, the code of conduct in this town with respect to people who work in service to the town. And Mr. Cavey then instructed me to resend the code of conduct that this esteemed board passed six months ago to every elected and appointed official of this town. And we did that. And we've received back from at least 50% of those members their acknowledgement of receipt and their understanding of the code of conduct. So I think in terms of remediation, and Joe points this out often, and I agree with him, you are a policymaking committee. You've done your part, you've made policy. And when people break the policy, as it appears may have happened, they're held accountable, and Vice Chairman Cavey did that. And he did it at length and to the best of his ability with respect to understanding what's expected of all of us with respect to behavior. We sent out the code of conduct and have actually asked for the confirmation. In terms of starting that committee, Ronna knows clearly that that's an open door. And if she chooses to follow that process of asking town meeting body, the legislative body, to create a committee, all I'd say is, don't wait for me to call. You come in, you tell us, "I'm going to bring the town clerk up, we're going to go through the bylaw." If that's something you choose to do, we'll serve you. We'll hold your hand, we'll walk you through it, we'll show you how to do it. What we can't do, and I think that's how the dispute started several months ago, citizens can't expect that we're going to proactively call out and offer our service. If anybody needs help, call us. That's why we have two doors in that office. One of them's always open, and we're happy to walk you through it. You know that. We've been here several times, and Mr. Cavey has been in there. So I said I'd be brief. I'll end it there. I think we dealt with the behavioral issues. I think we dealt with the behavioral issues. And Steve did a remarkable job of laying it out to everyone, what we expect of them. But as Joe points out, your authority goes only so far. And, and I think this board has exercised the full extent of its authority on this issue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Calder. Now with that, we're going to move ahead to our next citizen and next comment respectfully.
So nothing else, more can I say? I can't say anything else.
So the next person I saw raise their hand was Mrs. Walsh. And then the next person I saw raise their hand was Mrs. Donna Jutress. Mrs. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. My comment isn't worth your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. Uh, next is Mrs. Donna Jutress, who's online. Mrs. Jutress.
Maybe her speaker's off.
Yeah, her speaker must be off. I see. Oh, here she comes now. Hello there. So, um, let's move along and once she... Can you get a message to her? I know we, I cannot, but, um, yeah. Just one more minute, please. Yeah. Can you hear us? Can you hear us now? Okay. In the meantime, and in the essence of time, moving along to agenda item number six, which is a consent agenda item. Approval of open session meeting minutes of August 15th, 2023 and September 5th, 2023. It's A. And B is approved Stoughton Professional Administrative Employee Association contract. Does anyone want to pull any one of those A or B? Mr. Carrara.
I, I don't, I don't want to pull, but I think we should vote, vote each one separately because the contract one's kind of important.
Okay. Oh, wait just a minute. Is that Mrs. Donna Jutress on the line? Um, Ms. Jutress.
Yes.
Hi. We wanted to recognize you under the section of our agenda, citizens' comments.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, I'm Donna Jutress from 319 West Street. I, um, just had a quick comment to make. I'll be very brief. Tomorrow marks the one-year anniversary of the Select Board approving the Hometown Heroes Program in a three-to-one vote. Um, I reached out to the Select Board on August 24th and I received a very quick response from, um, Vice Chair Cavey and Ms. Johnson of the Veterans Office. So I thank them very much. But I was discouraged to hear that, um, the former Veterans Agent took his institutional knowledge on the project with him. So my questions are, um, will there be a procedure set up in the future, such as an exit interview, so that the town can document, um, the institu- institutional knowledge, um, of an employee on, um, such an important project? And also, um, can the residents receive an update, um, in the near future with actions taken on this, um, project since tomorrow marks the year that this was approved by the Select Board? Thank you.
Thank you so very much for your questions, Mrs. Jutress. Uh, maybe Mr. Calder can address that.
Certainly. Uh, we do exit interviews for every employee that leaves our employ. Uh, I do have a report from Sean on the issues he updated us on. Uh, that issue does not sound familiar to me, of course. It was before my time as, as Town Manager. But I will look that up. And if, um, if you wouldn't mind, uh, giving me a phone call tomorrow and bring me up to speed. Jilda and I will look up, neither of us were here then. We'll look up the agenda of a year ago and see what was passed and we can follow up on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calder. I think that would be very helpful. Uh, Mrs. Jutress, will that work for you?
Yes, thank you very much.
We, we do have your phone number right here. Is that the correct one, 8470?
Uh, no, it's not.
If, if you wouldn't mind, I won't get your phone number now. If you wouldn't mind just giving Jilda a call tomorrow, we'll pull the meeting minutes from a year ago and, uh, we'll follow up with you.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jutress, and thank you, Tom. Okay, uh, going back to consent agenda. First, a motion to approve, which is approval of open meeting session minutes of August 15th, 2023 and September 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Second, which is 6B, approved Stoughton Professional Administration, Administrative Employees Association contract? On the roll call vote, because... Okay. Okay, we'll vote it. The motion to approve.
Motion to approve the contract for spaya, as written.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor on the roll call vote? Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you very much. Moving right along to item number seven, to consider approval and acceptance of a donation from the Stoughton Crossing Limited Partnership. I believe Mr. McDonald will be the presenter on that. It says on our agenda, it was James Conlin, the Environmental Affairs Officer, but Mr. Jerry McDonald is here to speak on, on behalf of this item. Hello there. How are you?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Uh, please state your name and your affiliation with, um, this issue.
Yeah, Jerry McDonald, uh, Chairman of the Conservation Commission, Precinct Four Town Meeting Rep. And I'm here to answer any questions on that, uh, donation of land.
So, uh, Mr. Calder.
Jerry, we've got the, the report here, uh, that I believe it's 10 acres. Can, can you give us the circumstances behind it being donated to the town?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. It's a property owner, uh, Pondview Lane, uh, had about 20 acres and was looking for approval of three house lots. Very challenging geography up there with, uh, ledge outcroppings and vernal pools and significant wetlands. Committee went through its deliberations over quite a long time and ultimately approved, uh, three house lots that the applicant was looking for on the overall property. In part of the conditions that were, uh, you know, part of the mitigation would be the term that Jim would use for that, was the donation of 12.5 acres that is to the rear of the property, um, that abuts some existing town, well, not directly abuts, but very close to very mu- quite a bit of existing town conservation land. So that was a condition of approval. Uh, each of the house lots has conservation restrictions on them that the homeowners are going to have to abide by to protect this, again, the significant wetland resources. So that was the process that the Conservation Commission went through that was obviously acceptable to the developer to get his approval. And that's where we're at. So there's, you know, on the 20, uh, the 12 acres is to be donated, you know, vernal pools, ledge outcroppings, wetlands. I think Jim sent you maps on the, and pictures in, in his presentation, I hope. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, uh, Mr. McDonald. Uh, when I, when I look at wetlands, I see some benefits to having wetlands. And when I look at your Conservation Commission, I see you currently manage thousands of acres of land in Stoughton, uh, like one behind the Gibbon School. Uh, but wetlands, one of the benefits is to protect wildlife, um, to preserve, um, against, you know, the down gradient of the butters or flooding. So you protecting things like that. Am I on track with this particular plot of land? Because I just have a high-level view of why I benefit, why I think the benefits, uh, to wetlands are.
Yeah, this, this property has quite a bit of wetlands on it. It, it directly abuts an existing town conservation parcel to the east. And the Glen Echo Park property, 92 acres, is almost immediately to the west. So we thought it was a very good parcel to protect. It has very significant wetlands on it.
We also have, uh...
Mr. Carrara.
Through you, Madam Chairman. Part of the 139 drainage dumps into this area. Halfway up the hill, it, it breaks in and then it, it adds a surmounting amount of flow in there. There, there is a, a detention basin in it, but it only detains it to get it into there. It doesn't hold it. And it's, it's just, it'd be sad to see somebody try to put a house in there because they're not going to get a full roadway width, which will probably put them in a, in a thing where the town would not plow it. It would be so narrowed. And I wouldn't want to be Chief Carroll and his guys trying to get in there and fight a fire because they'll be too invasive into that, that area. I think this is the best way out. And like Jerry says, it abuts a piece in there too.
Yeah, the property that in question, these three lots that were approved and the parcel that's being donated, sit between a 20-acre conservation parcel to the east that runs right out to Turnpike Street. Actually, there is access to the conserv- existing conservation land on Turnpike Street. Not great access, but access. And then to the west, the Archdiocese of Boston owns two parcels that are landlocked and practically all underwater. And then you're back into the Glen, Glen Echo property. So it's, it's pretty much a lot of water out there. Scott mentioned, uh, a lot of isolated water, a lot of flowing water.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Is there a, a specific language you would like us to use as we pose the motion?
I think the motion was in the packet. I didn't...
All right. Did, what's, oh, maybe Mr. Gito can read the motion?
Maybe Mr. Gito has to find it first.
I know, I had to as well.
I hereby move that the Select Board accept the donation of land by Stoughton Crossing Limited Partnership to be held under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission. The land is shown as pre-parcel 082-057-0 on a plan titled definitive subdivisions Silver Glen Estates, comma, map 82, lot 57, Stoughton, Mass., dated February 25th, 2021, and prepared by Fieldstone Survey Services Professional Land Surveying, 45 Millex Avenue, Plymouth, Mass., 02360. Which plan is recorded at Norfolk County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 703, page 7, I mean, 96, said land containing 12.47 acres, more or less?
Is there a second?
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Have a great night.
Have a great night.
Have you, Jerry, or would you like the board to write a letter of thanks?
I think since the Select Board is accepting the land, that might be appropriate. But you tell us.
We all agree, yes.
We could also include them in the letter.
Joint letter would be nice.
Yeah. I agree.
Joint letter. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to the next item, which is item number eight. Authorize the Town Manager to file and execute grant slash loan application agreement and related documents as necessary regarding the design, construction of the Muddy Pond, uh, GAC water treatment facilities. Votes may be taken. Mr. Calder, will you speak to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Or will Mr. McNulty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, um, this agenda item has to do with the article number one of the November 28th, 2022 special town meeting with respect to, uh, Muddy Pond Water Treatment Improvements, uh, directly as it relates to PFAS. Uh, the applications are due between now and the next Select Board meeting. Uh, applications for low-interest, no-interest loans as well as grants. Uh, so what this article, what this, uh, agenda item is asking is for the board to authorize the Town Manager to execute, uh, those, those applications on behalf of the Select Board since we don't meet again until after the due date of those applications. They're, uh, nearly complete. Uh, it's for over $5 million worth of loans and grant, um, applications. So it's simply to ask, and we've put the motion on the first page under item eight, that we're asking the board to pass.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gito.
I move to authorize the Town Manager to file and execute the grant loan application agreements and related documents as necessary regarding the design, construction of Muddy Pond. Second.
All in favor?
GAC water treatment facilities. Still second. Second.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Carrara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Thank you, members.
Pardon me for, for breathing.
Thank you. Uh, moving to our next agenda item, which is, uh, we suspended our table number nine. Uh, we'll address that in two weeks. It's number 10, to consider designated and appoint liaison with the SMAC Board of Directors pursuant to the new SMAC access agreement. So I'll read a section from, um, Attorney Brian Winters' notice to us. And it was on number one, Article Five slash, and Article 11. It says, "The agreement shall provide that there shall be an independent, three-member oversight committee consisting of two Select Board members and the Town Manager, which is authorized and required to liaison with SMAC to facilitate communication, transparency, and compliance with the agreement and SMAC bylaws, and that SMAC shall cooperate and not unreasonably interfere with same." So with that, before we call on the motion, um, to appoint one or two liaisons, I'm sorry, two liaisons to accompany our Town Manager, what are we looking to have this liaison do is, because we have a lot of stipulations in our contract and we've addressed a lot of things. Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Madam Chair, uh, just to share my views and, um, my intent to ask for my colleagues' support to be one of those designees. I think we have a great opportunity with the contract that's in place and what I've experienced recently in a couple of meetings at SMAC, that we never end up in a position where we were recently that can be contentious and is not a good use of their nor our time and to ensure that the contract, as it's written, is being fully complied with. And, and be able to see, in addition to the Board of Directors, see, uh, the President, Vice President, Treasurer of SMAC, but as the people's representatives for municipal government and the, the, the board that issues the contract, I think having... issues the contract, I think having a liaison there that is just there as an observer, we don't need to be there all the time, but it just allows us the opportunity to see more than we might not have, or we may have missed in years past. We've noticed some people still that come here asking us to do things that really are not within our authority, but there's a reason they're coming, and they feel there's a need. So I think this is a position I think can help our board have kind of a view from the inside, looking out as to how things are going. And if anything, I think maybe to be just that person that says, hey, can we try this? And can we try that? I mean, we're not, you know, going to be voting. I happen to be a member of SMAC. I joined, and I believe that, you know, I joined because I do care about it. And I see, and I've seen in short time, you know, the change that the folks at SMAC have been able to... I'll just say I'm starting to see the culture change, you know? So with that, I'll yield to everybody else, and I would ask that my colleagues would consider supporting me for one of those positions.
I think that's great. I also think it would, its value add, that you are a member and you... I would use the word spearheaded, the whole contract negotiation, but from the very beginning, until I stepped in and, you know, we formed our little group and we managed and directed and worked closely with SMAC. We have two, in the bylaws, we stated two Select Board members. So if you are appointed, who would be the other? Okay, so Mr. Corower?
I was going to offer up that I thought Mr. McCrisky and I think Steve Cave would be another one, because Steve seemed, he explained a lot to me when he was, when this was going on, and Joe did, too. So I would go for them, too. I don't have the time to do it, and I know your hands are probably tied, and I know Steve was interested.
Yes. Yeah, my hands are tied. How about you, Mr. Gito? Did you have an interest?
I think Steve would...
So you want to nominate? Oh, I could nominate Mr. McCrisky and Vice Chair Cave to be...
You can just appoint them if you want. We'll vote on it.
Well, I appoint, but I would really like to have the vote.
Want a motion?
Yeah, I would like a motion to appoint Vice Chair Cave and Mr. McCrisky.
I make the motion. As Deborah said that Joe spearheaded, so I put Joe first, Mr. McCrisky, and then Mr. Cave second, to be our two designees, liaisons.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Thank you all.
Quite welcome. Thank you so much, Joe. Moving right along to Item Number 11, Town Manager Performance Review. Start the process. I have 11 on mine. It says item number... Is that correct, or has that changed? Okay, that is correct. Okay. So this is the template we use...
Amended one, agenda.
Oh, yeah, there was an amended, yeah. When things get amended, that kind of changes. Moving right along. This is the template that we developed back in year 2020, 2021, I believe it was. Let me see that date. Yeah. So what will, I suggest, I strongly suggest, we use this template. Cave, Vice Chair Cave, is going to populate it with the goals of Mr. Coulter, and then I suggest that we all provide our evaluation, and Mr. Coulter, provide a self-evaluation as well. And we have a turnaround time of two weeks. So two weeks, send it in, and Vice Chair Cave and I will aggregate the information or combine the information and give the results, and we'll target in two weeks, our next Select Board meeting, to have this done. Will this work for everyone? So I... Oh, this... Well, when we... So the agenda was amended, so that's what was tricky for me, too. And I'll give you a copy, Mr. Gito. It's real straightforward. Just a minute.
I have, if I'm correct, Lou, the 14th, it come out?
It came out on the 14th.
I have an email here from Jilda. The agenda has been amended.
I have it. Because I have a two-page...
Yeah, the 14th, and there is the attachment attached to that email as well.
So contractionally, this is the timeframe we agreed to provide Mr. Coulter or start the process of his performance review. And like all performance reviews, it should not come as a surprise, because we have been giving assessments, evaluations, evaluations along the way, since you started, December, right? December to now. So it should not come as a surprise.
From Louids, come weekly.
Weekly, because you talk to him all the time. Yes. Yes, Mr. Corower?
I'm going to get a ruling from Town Council if I can take place in this. I know I could vote on it, but I don't know about going to this level. I did stay away from Robbins. How are we scoring this? There's nothing on here. There's no key.
Yes, we'll include the key. He's going to populate it with the key, you know, one through five, and also with the goals of Mr. Coulter. And once again, this should not be a surprise to anyone. That is what the goals are and the feedback you've been receiving all along. We just want to publicize it, put it together, and then publicize it. Anything else? Two weeks? Two-week turnaround time? Does that work?
Works fine.
All right.
Madam Chair, did you instruct us to send the completed copy back to Steve?
Yes, please send the completed copy back to Steve, and then we can aggregate the information.
One more point, Madam Chair. You know that I'm all about service to the board, so I'd just like to make this offer. I'd be happy to make each of your evaluations out if you need a little help.
Lou said what? Oh, please repeat that. That's a good one.
Mr. Gito, as you know, I'm all about service to my board, so I'd be delighted to make out each of your evaluations if you'd like.
I think you're too hard on yourself. That's why we wouldn't want you to do it. But anyway, with that said, if there is no further business for the board, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good night, everyone. Have a nice evening, and see you next time.